Hello.
Come on, Greg, how are you?
Oh, I, uh, I'm sort of headwinds like I said, because of the resources issue.
So they're doing 12, 13, 14, 15.
I tried to get out of him what his theme was.
Oh, you do?
It was spread.
See, they were really good. Every time I see their game, I just, yeah, any, yeah, any.
The way inflation would trump us. I'm saying, I was in Toronto this weekend, and it was maybe nineteen. If people exercise the fair.
All right. Sorry, Ben.
No, they could tell me.
He's good, he's good, thank you.
Yeah.
We should just start.
So you're like last weekend.
Immediately.
I, uh, I just.
Oh, very good point.
Well, it's only great if I get in, right? I did. Oh, sorry, Ben.
No, they could tell me.
He's good, he's good, thank you.
Yeah.
We should just start.
So you're like last weekend.
Immediately.
I, uh, I just.
Oh, great.
Very good point.
Well, it's only great if I get in, right?
I did.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of March eleventh to order. First, we'll have the flag salute.
The flag is to the fire. The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of the meeting, please, Mrs. Aliyevich. I hereby make this statement to indicate compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter two, three, one of the public laws of New Jersey, nineteen seventy-five, which became effective ninety days after enactment, January nineteenth, nineteen seventy-six. Notice that this meeting was given by providing the location, time, and date of this meeting, posting the same on the front door of the Board of Education offices, by delivering copies to the Borough Hall and the Matatchin Public Library, the Home News and Tribune, and by filing a copy with the Borough Clerk prescribed by this law. Thank you. Rule call, please. Mr. Bott.
Here.
Ms. Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Dierflinger.
Here.
Mr. Glassberg.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Here.
Ms. Colleen.
Here.
Mr. Lifton.
Here.
Ms. Thresha.
Here.
Dr. Spigner.
Here.
Mr. Soss.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Caputo, we have a showcase of success today.
Madam President, very excited tonight. We have the showcase of the MHS Spring Musical. The MHS Footlighters will present the music Footloose this weekend on Friday, March fourteenth, and Saturday, March fifteenth, at seven o'clock, as well as Sunday, March sixteenth, at two o'clock. So Friday and Saturday at seven, Sunday at two. Tickets are available at MHSFootlighters.com or at the door. In Footloose, a teenager moves to a small town where dancing is banned. There, he befriends his new classmates and challenges the community to change this unjust law. Tonight, juniors Manali Weller, Sanvi Karthik, Emily Grasso, and Cadence Agnew will preview our performance with Holding Out For A Hero.
Where have all the good men gone? And where are all the gods? Where's the streetwise Hercules to fight the rising odds? Isn't there a white knight upon a fiery steed? Late at night, I toss and I turn.
I toss and I turn.
And I dream of what I need. I need a hero. Somewhere after midnight, in my wildest fantasy. Somewhere just beyond my reach, there's someone reaching back for me. Racing on the thunder and rising with the heat. It's gonna take a superman to sweep me off my feet. I need a hero. I'm holding up for a hero till the end of the night. He's gotta be strong, and he's gotta be fast, and he's gotta be fresh from the fight. I need a hero. I'm holding up for a hero till the morning light. He's gotta be sure, and it's gotta be soon, and he's gotta be larger than life. Larger than love. Up where the mountains meet the heavens above. Out where the lightning's fantasy. I can swear there is someone somewhere watching me. Through the wind and the chill and the rain and the storm and the flood. I can feel his approach like a fire in my blood. Like a fire in my blood, like a fire in my blood, like a fire in my blood, like a fire in my... Oh, oh, I need a hero. I'm holding up for a hero till the end of the night. He's gotta be strong, and he's gotta be fast, and he's gotta be fresh from the fight. I need a hero. I'm holding up for a hero till the morning light. He's gotta be sure, and it's gotta be soon, and he's gotta be larger than life. Larger than love. I need a hero.
Wow, that was spectacular. So, uh, Saturday and Sunday?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Sunday.
Yep.
Friday and Saturday at seven, and two o'clock on Sunday. All right.
Bravo, great job.
Ms. Jacoby, Ms. Crummles, thank you, guys. Well, look forward to seeing you this weekend, ladies. Bonnie Tyler will be proud.
That was excellent.
How do you buy tickets again?
You buy seats on MHSFootlighter.com or at the door.
Thank you.
Dr. Caputo, do you know who wrote that song?
I don't.
The same person who wrote all of Meatloaf's songs. Jim Steinman.
Oh, big hitmaker.
You can kind of, yeah, you can kind of feel it in that crescendo that he's got there.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. I was gonna say, thank you for that information.
That was useful. All right, so at this time, we open to the public for any comments. All right, seeing none. I believe we turn to our budget presentations for the evening.
We do. So tonight, we have school-based budgets in special education and our preliminary twenty-five, twenty-six budget. We'll start tonight with our special ed accounts. Thank you, Ms. Bonnississa. Create that long dramatic walk for you guys.
I just want to say, what a great job those, the kids. I'm always so impressed with the talent of our students. I can't wait to come Friday night to see the, to see the show. I'm really looking forward to it.
Absolutely.
So, good evening, and thank you so much for inviting me to speak this evening about the special education budget and the services provided by these funds. There are currently four hundred and eighteen students that are serviced under this budget, which represents about seventeen point two percent of our district. All of the assessed needs of these students are reflected within this budget. Tonight, I'm gonna focus on four key areas. I'm going to focus on supplies and materials, contracted professional services, tuition for out-of-district students, and special, specific initiatives and programs. For supplies and materials, these are funds that support essential resources for differentiated instruction, IEP goals, and the unique needs of our students. They also cover essential supplies for our child study teams, speech therapists and school nurses. We're projecting a slight increase in those lines. For contracted professional services, this is a significant expense, covering services purchased from individuals or agencies that possess specialized skills, knowledge, professional licenses, to address specific needs in the areas of disabilities, such as physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, pathologist, teacher of the deaf services, nursing services, board-certified behavior analysts, behavior technicians, and specialized evaluations. Consultative, consultation services provided to our staff that meet the unique needs of some of our students are also included. These services are important for addressing the diverse needs of our students and maintaining them within district whenever possible. The increase in the pre-K line reflects the increased need for support for our youngest learners, such as in speech, occupational therapy, behavioral support, and specialized evaluations. The K to twelve line supports our mental health initiative, including services from our partners, Effective School Solutions, Rutgers U B H C, and Wellspring, as well as contracted behavior analytic services. We have had an increase in those contracted behavioral services to port student, to support students' mental health and behavioral health needs. This increase in this line reflects the increased rates from some of our vendors, as well as the expansion of our partnerships with other contracted experts who have the expertise that we do not have in district to address these very unique needs of our students. For out-of-district tuition, other than purchase technical services, this is one of the largest expenses in the department. These are programs that the district places students in when we do not have the appropriate program in our schools. In recent years, we, with the addition of our eighteen to twenty-one program and all those therapeutic services that I had mentioned, and those programs that have allowed numerous students to remain in district in their Matatchin community, which has been really a great experience for the students. Those tuition rates are set by the out-of-district placements, and they increase annually. And then, I would like to talk about some specific initiatives and programs. I would like to just take a moment to briefly highlight some of these specific focus areas based on the resources in the current budget. And I also want to acknowledge that there are some wonderful and amazing things happening every day in our classrooms with our teachers and educators and support staff, and I want to thank them for their dedication in meeting the needs of all of our students. So, our special education ELE teachers collaborate with our literacy coach and embed multisensory learning and reading instruction into our programs to guide targeted literacy instruction and closely monitor student growth. Our Matatchin Internship Learning Experience Program has really continued with such great success this year. We are appreciative of our many community partners that provide our students with these wonderful opportunities. It's really been such, such an amazing experience for our students. The proactive support provided by our mental health partners, including parent training, staff workshops, student-centered lessons and activities to promote coping skills, positive wellness, safe decision-making, and wealth, and a wealth of knowledge and resources. And lastly, I'm looking forward to a potential new cohort of teachers to take, to take part with our partner of FDU and the OG reading cohort. So, I'm hopeful for a possible cohort of new teachers. Tonight, as I conclude the special education budget presentation, I would like to thank all of the parents, community, and staff who contribute to the daily success of the special education programs. I would like to especially thank those who participate in our CPAC leadership team, our special education district leadership team, for their ongoing support and commitment to the continuous improvement in our department. I am so appreciative of their time, effort, and collaboration and support of our parents and educators who are vital to the success of our students. And lastly, I would like to extend my thanks to Dr. Caputo, Mr. Harvier, Dr. Herzog, and the Board of Education for your continued support of our special education program and department. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board for Ms. Bonnississa?
Just a comment. Thank you for staying at two percent. I know it's hard with prices going up on everything and services increasing and finding, finding those savings wherever you can. We really appreciate you proposing a budget that's at two percent.
Thank you, thank you. You know, we want to make sure that we're meeting all those needs, and we were able to do that with this budget, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Colleen. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Soss.
Thank you for the presentation, and I echo what Ms. Colleen said. I had a little trouble mapping what you were saying to the budget line item, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine. So, you know, the, the, the four biggest numbers were purchase tech and services for three thirty-seven.
That's a pre-K line.
That's the pre-K.
Yep.
Okay. And then, tuition, uh, to, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, to, uh, C, CSD and Reg Day School for forty-one.
So, so there are two out-of-district tuition lines. One of those is for schools that are considered to be public for students with disabilities, and then there's schools that are private, approved private schools for students with disabilities. Those are those two separate lines.
So that's the forty-one and eight fifty-five?
Yes.
A wild swing between the two.
So, so that accounts for movements from schools. So, some students attend the private, some students attend the public, and then there was just a shift in those, in those placements.
And the, and the last item, the nurse supplies and mater, the one eight, one nine, the one million eight hundred nineteen thousand?
Oh, so, so that's that K to twelve purchase tech line that I was talking about. Those are all of those partnerships with our mental health partners and other contracted services that cover students from kindergarten all the way through high school.
Right, and that went up one oh three.
It did.
That's a lot, it's unfortunate.
It did.
And, and again, that went up one oh three, and you still kept us at two percent, so great job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Bonnississa.
Thank you, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bonnississa. Next up will be Mr. Prowsky with the high school, school-based budget.
Good evening, folks. I recognize that my budget presentations from the past may have been a little extra, so I thought it might be more refreshing for this one to be a little bit more subtle. Albeit, ordinary.
Oh, dear.
In all actuality, while this year's budget is ordinary, it's organized in a way to support some of the extras that will enhance our students' experiences. Within the supplies budget, or a portion of our budget, which reflects a decrease of close to sixteen thousand dollars, we are addressing the ordinary items comprised of things like basic instructional supplies for each of the content areas, consumable items specifically in art, music, and our Twenty-First Century Life and Careers programming, licenses for online ancillary instructional materials, including Delta Math, Senior Wooly, and Gimkit, and testing needs for those students who are taking the SEAL of Bili literacy exams. While you see the decrease in the supplies budget line, the extras we're purchasing include a Yamaha intermediate-level trombone for our more proficient student musicians, and the Photoshop license for our fine arts and graphics courses. Our textbook budget line addresses the ordinary items like text replenishments, or additional texts for current courses based upon student enrollment, and online resources that are linked to student textbooks. You see, we do have several textbooks that were previously adopted that have been used for the past six years, and we have determined the life of that textbook is still appropriate, so we need to extend those licenses for our students to use. Our textbook line also sees an increase of close to fourteen thousand dollars. The extras that we're addressing include the AP US History textbook purchases. During this year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we supplied our AP US History I students with the new textbook. In order to ensure that we complete the whole purchase, we will be completing the purchase for AP US II for the upcoming school year. Also, our AP Physics course, both of our AP Physics courses, both one and two, are in need of new textbooks as well. Therefore, we are putting extra time and energy into ensuring that the students have updated textbooks and ancillary materials to support their learning. You'll see that our budget lines in the Library Media Center are pretty much status quo, with adjustments to each budget line based upon where the needs are. You'll see a decrease in our more ordinary budget lines, including library books and periodical materials, because we are putting in extra efforts to enhance our online AV materials. You'll also see that the miscellaneous supplies and miscellaneous expenses budget lines have increased. These budget lines maintain the ordinary items that we support at MHS, like various academic competitions and memberships to professional organizations. Meanwhile, the increases are being made to support the extras that we feel are important to our students, which enhance their experiences, such as honor society, chapter memberships, and various content areas, in various content areas, and upgrading a long overdue and way underused instructional space. This year, we're also putting extra into the ordinary purchases of our co-curricular budget line. We're taking the time to put some additional funding into the marching band, as they continue to grow from their prior tournament of band registrations to more competitive programs, such as Bands of America and US Bands Competitions, whose fees are much higher. Additionally, since our marching band participation continues to grow, the uniform inventory must also meet that need. We address this in our budget this year. These extras may seem ordinary, but they're definitely necessary. On a final note, Warren Buffett once stated, "It's not necessary to do extraordinary things to get extraordinary results." Based upon the information that I've shared with you this evening, I'd like to abridge his statement and say that I feel it's necessary to equip our students and our staff with both the extra and the ordinary within our school's budget to continue to yield extraordinary results. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Prowsky. Any questions or comments on this presentation?
Same general comment with all of the increases that are going along all of the supply lines. Thank you for staying at two percent.
Wasn't easy, but we did it.
Mr. Soss?
Sorry. Great presentation, again echoing what Ms. Colleen, I know I put you, put you a lot of pressure on you last night. I was expecting, you know, song and dance, but being two percent, that's better.
I think it's actually extraordinary.
There you go.
Question for you. This year, schools officially starts, you know, first period, we have period zero, and we have unfortunately non-elected classes during period zero, which was not really the intent. Is that a resourcing issue? Do you need more teachers? Is it a lab space issue? Is there something that we can done from a budgetary perspective?
It's nothing to do, honestly, with resources, as much as it is the fact that we have a booming large, a booming section of students who came into this school year, who had specifically class sectioning for a course that... who had specifically, uh, class sectioning for, uh, a course that we couldn't contain within the entire school day. You know, with multiple sections as well as with multiple classrooms and multiple teachers teaching at the same time, and with the demand of different students needing other programming that is necessary to meet their specific instructional needs, whether it's in an English class or a science class or, uh, history, et cetera. There's a lot of moving parts there and unfortunately, based upon what was available, that's how we had to manage it for this year. I don't believe that it's an issue, uh, that is consistent. It really does depend upon the number of students that are enrolled in specific sections and the challenges that we have with our schedule right now as it looks.
Is it something that, uh, that can be, you know, again, knowing what's coming next year? And unfortunately, the, the years afterwards. I mean, I think the, you know, to use the NJISSA term, you know, we're a group-two school. So I think the, the size of the school is going to continue. Is there a way that that, um, can be addressed? Or do we just say, we start at zero period now?
Um, well, uh, I think a lot of things will happen once we see a potentially new schedule, once we have the fully completed construction program, uh, project here, because we'll have additional classrooms. We'll have the ability to, uh, to shrink our, uh, our lunch periods from three periods to two, uh, which would definitely assist with our, the rest of our scheduling. So, you know, i- it really is a mixed bag as far as how we can solve every problem. But I think one of the ways that it's going to be solved is through the completion of the construction project, the additional space for our lunches, and, uh, a revised schedule that will meet the needs of our students, our staff, and, and, uh, continue to help them excel.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any from this side of the room? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Profsky.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Ms. Profsky. Next, Ms. Asavado from Edgar Middle.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for providing me the opportunity to present the Edgar Middle School Budget: Considerations for the 25-26 school year. Through collaboration with our district supervisors, I believe we have put together a budget which maintains programs and continues to move our school forward. In our budgets, there are 10 accounts. Of those 10, six either stayed the same or were reduced. In Language Arts, there was a slight decrease in the budget. This is due to the decrease in the cost for Scholastic Magazine subscriptions we use as a resource for both our general education, special education, and RTI classes. In Social Studies, we also had a decrease to the overall budget. We continue to use History Alive Experiential Learning resource for each grade level through teacher licenses and resources as well as New ZLA Pro School Subscription, which provides differentiated interdisciplinary nonfiction reading materials in both English, Language Arts, and Social Studies. Following an audit, we determined that the Social Studies New ZLA Civics Program was not widely utilized by teachers, so we have removed it for next year. The Math Budget had a decrease in both general supplies and textbook lines. This decrease reflects the completion of our new textbook purchases. We did, however, budget for replacement textbooks, and we're continuing to use Delta Math as a resource that supports student-centered learning activities. The Science Budget is geared towards replenishing supplies, textbooks, and equipment repairs. Supplies for Science Club and Environmental were also included to support each of these extracurricular opportunities. Included in the Environmental Club request are parts to maintain the pond in the courtyard. The World Language Budget had a slight increase in general supplies. We also have to purchase one-year subscriptions for Spanish and German online textbook licenses. The Budgets for Industrial Arts, Art, and Music had a slight increase. This is mostly due to inflation, um, and the increased costs of consumables. The Sight Reading Factory Program has also proven to be a necessary platform. We added for chorus this year as well as the NAFME memberships for staff. Staff require these memberships in order to nominate Edgar students to the regional and honors-level ensembles. This is a great honor for our students. This year, our students have been accepted in both the orchestra and band regional ensembles. Our General Supplies for Instruction Budget Line has an increase due to inflation. Linkit continues to be our data management system for ELA and math for grade six through eight. In grade five, ma- math and ELA, we are using I Ready Benchmark, which aligns directly to both programs. This data has helped drive instruction and has been key in helping us place students in our RTI cohorts and offering targeted instruction. The Miscellaneous Expenses for Instruction Account has a slight decrease. Last year, we piloted Smart Pass and are currently using it. It has been a helpful and ensuring students' instructional time is maximized. Although the library counts look different, the overall expenses for the library remain the same, and administrative travel expenses have remained flat. In closing, I believe this budget has been developed to help our students while we hold high standards for our school. As a national blue ribbon school, it is essential to continue to grow and improve. Having the resources we need will ensure this. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you about Edgar Middle School's budget. I am especially grateful for all your support for our students and teachers. Without it, Edgar would not be as successful as it is.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Asavado. Any questions or comments? Mr. Glassberg?
Uh, quick question about Linkit. Um, do we use it for other things like intervention management also? Or just straight, just for the, I wasn't, I'm looking also at Dr. Herzog because I thought it might be...
Yes, we do. So we use the benchmarks also to help, as a piece of data, to help decide which students need, um, RTI. And also, t- the supervisors meet with the, the teachers and they look at all the data to drive their instruction and come up with plans for the students.
We don't have the module intervention manager though. We use the platform to manage our groupings and make this, and our decisions.
Use it to make decisions about interventions, but not, not the integration.
Don't purchase the intervention manager.
Right.
Thank you.
We do it ourselves.
Thank you, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dierflinger?
Mrs. Asavado, I'm just wondering, because I saw it on the high school budget too. Line 19, the principal missed supply for, is that instruments? Or instruction? Line 19. Can you just specify what that is, that line item, please?
$4,564.
Yes, it's for instruction.
Okay. Not instruments.
No, no, not instruments.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
All right. Other questions or comments? Ms. Colleen?
Well, I'll just take time to compliment you also.
Oh, thank you.
That's your lane today.
It is my line today, but I, I really am impressed that, that all of you have been able to do this. Um, it really does make a difference. And so, um, I know, I, like, you know, I, I heard you say that you're monitoring usage reports to see, to evaluate what to renew and not... All those little things add up across the building, so thank you very much for staying at 2%.
Thank you, Ms. Colleen. Mr. Suss?
Again, echoing what Ms. Colleen said, thank you again for 2%. So I'm not going to ask, like, what you would cut if we had to cut something else, but I do have a question. What would you add if you did have a little bit more money?
Oh, a little bit more money? I was going to say cafeteria.
That's a sore point.
No, I understand. It's understandable. So if I had more money, I would definitely, it would be a lot of spaces. So music, um, our instrumental program would have more practicing spaces because we have such a large music program. And unfortunately, lessons often take place in the cafeteria or because it's just a lot of students that are taking it. It's probably like the first thing that I would do. And that's something that I'm considering doing when we have the referendum, when the construction's over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Asavado. If there are no more questions, comments? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, next is Dr. Costanza.
Good evening, everybody. So great to see you this evening. Uh, I want to take the opportunity to express my heartfelt gratitude to all the Campbell teachers, staff, and administrative team who have contributed to the extensive budget process. "If you don't weigh in, you don't buy in." Those words by Patrick Lencioni inform our survey-based feedback approach at Campbell, and it certainly applies to the budget process as well. Uh, thank you to the school board and community partners for your dedication, insight, and commitment to all of the Campbell kids and ensuring that the, our needs of the staff as well are met. Great thanks to central office team, Doctors Caputo and Herzog, Mr. Harvier for their support in making sure Campbell's well-funded and well-supported. We always know that we don't stand alone in doing this important work of caring for other people's children. Although there are minimal changes in Campbell's budget year over year, this year, few are worth highlighting. Namely, we've increased our general supply line, which allows us to order some more composition books for writing in particular. While there are so many different approaches to support children's development in writing, a research-based strategy is simply to provide more writing opportunities. The additional composition books allow us to do exactly that. Additional increases in supplies are the typical consumable, consumables of pencils, construction paper, graphing materials, graphing paper, and materials of that sort. Additional classroom extensions support the work that has been led by Dr. Herzog's office and supported certainly by the supervisors that we have the good fortune of working with. Teachers have worked on revisions to the ELA curriculum, as you're aware of, throughout the year with the focus on, again, enhancing the writing curriculum. Words I use when I write is included in this work to support, along with the composition books. In case you don't know, Words I Use is a spelling dictionary young writers use to expand upon the learning of new words, kind of like a word wall that's personal to each and every child. Further, art materials, music materials, and materials that support language development, gifted and talented resources are also included in Campbell's budget. In short, the Campbell budget reflects the whole child approach that serves as the cornerstone of this district and along with the high-quality expectations of this board. Uh, thank you again for your unwavering support of the work that we do, and I'm certainly happy, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Costanza. Any questions from the board or comments? Looking at you, Ms. Colleen.
Thank you for staying at 2%.
My pleasure.
And it sounds like a broken record, but it's important to acknowledge. So thank you very much.
We appreciate the, um, context that we work within and the great support. So it's, uh, on behalf of my colleagues, we put a lot of effort into making sure that we do exactly that. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Suss?
Yes, um, can you explain the $1 change in the materials for Campbell?
He's getting to 2%.
Sharpening the pencil, Mr. Suss, you know?
Proving my point.
Come on. I'll, I'll cover that one. Is that legal?
My Venmo is @DrCostanza.
A, a similar question, uh, I just asked previously, like, again, great job, uh, for the 2%, but, uh, what, what pains you to cut out of this budget?
You know...
If you had more money?
I, I'm always thinking about professional development. Our work is a human enterprise. Uh, from a material standpoint, we have the great fortune of working in the touch-in. We're not wanting for materials. You know, having, uh, the work is very complex and being able to use them in a very thoughtful, strategic way and that supports all of the initiatives that come out, you know, from Dr. Herzog and Dr. Caputo with the support of the board. It always seems like there's never enough professional development from a time standpoint or from a scheduling standpoint. We would certainly support the collaborative work that happens in the district and would go to the SLT and get their input on, uh, how to best use resources if we were to have found money. But I would expect that it would be used to investing in the human resources, the great teachers that we have at Campbell.
Actually, a question of Mr. Harvier. Do we, so the PD money is per school?
Yes.
So, I mean, do, does every school use every dollar? Could, you know, for example, if one school has a need and another school, um, is not using everything, is...
Yeah, so the PD money comes from the curriculum lines, and we have FIPPI, which is contractual.
Right.
And then we also budget some money in the curriculum lines. So to answer your question, we could if, we're not prohibited from doing that.
Thanks. There you go.
Venmo again, Dr. Costanza.
Thank you, Mr. Suss. Thank you, Dr. Costanza.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Costanza. Next up, Jen Espercolas from Moss School.
Good evening. I am pleased to present to you this evening the 2025-2026 Moss School Budget. The planning of this budget marks an important milestone in our district's referendum with the advent of full-day kindergarten slated for the fall of 2025. In the path to our full realignment of schools, this budget is reflective of the collaborative efforts that began right here with the Board of Education and our referendum's commitment to providing Metatchin residents with full-day kindergarten. From there, multiple stakeholders in our Moss educational community have worked collaboratively to develop a shared vision for our future kindergarten program. From revising curriculum for increased instructional time to conducting a needs assessment of our growing building, this budget helps to allocate the proper resources needed to make our kindergarten vision come to light this fall. I'd like to highlight a few key areas where this budget reflects our vision and the evolving needs of our student population. The first area is increased enrollment. As you can imagine, there is a great deal of anticipation and excitement from the community following the announcement of full-day kindergarten. This excitement brings with it a projected increase in kindergarten enrollment. Based upon the demographic study from 2021 and our referendum planning, we are anticipating a growth in our kindergarten enrollment of approximately 25 to 30 students more for the upcoming year. In our general supply line, the projected increase in student enrollment impacts the need to increase our allocations in areas related to consumable supplies, instructional technology licenses, and the increase in the number of classrooms planned for fall 2025. The second area is in curriculum needs. As the instructional time provided to each of our kindergarten students will nearly double next year, so does the need to purchase additional and vital instructional materials that will supplement our curriculum. These resources will help our teachers delve deeper into the content and further differentiate approaches for each learner. Examples of some of these resources include additional mathematics manipulatives in each classroom, individualized phonics materials, and student-issued periodicals to enrich and extend learning. These materials will also enable our kindergarten team to further align with the instructional approaches and programs used in the upper elementary grades, such as the Ready Classroom for Mathematics and Mystery Science. The third area is our commitment to social-emotional learning. At Moss School, we recognize the vital role that we play in shaping our district's youngest learners, not only academically, but socially and personally as well. With the increase in time next year, we are thrilled to have an increase in opportunity. The new budget line, Miscellaneous Supplies for Instruction, supports our dedication to SEL at Moss School. From the creation of sensory-friendly spaces in the classroom, explicit social skills group lessons, and various other building-wide approaches, the inclusion of these resources will help set our students up for future success, both inside and outside of the classroom. In conclusion, this year's budget reflects a thoughtful and strategic approach to plan for our future Moss. It supports the evolution of our schools from half-day to our future realignment in the future, ensures that we provide high-quality instructional materials for all of our students, and reaffirms our commitment to educating the whole child. Thank you for your time and support. I am happy to take any questions you may have at this time. Mrs. Colleen, I will not be offended if you say, "No, thank you."
Thank you so much, Ms. Espercolas. I think you are presenting at a very exciting time indeed as we move towards this full-day kindergarten. So it is very exciting to see this budget come to life. Any questions or comments? I'll start over here this time.
No, it's okay.
If that's okay with you. Mr. Glassberg?
I just want to express, um, our excitement and confidence in, in you and your leadership as we transitioned first, two big transitions in a row, two years in a row, uh, to full-day kindergarten and then to a pre-K to, uh, second-grade school. That's a lot of transition, and, uh, we have full confidence in you to be able to handle that. Um, I'm assuming when we have three and a half, three and a half grades, the following year, you're not going to be able to be at 2%?
Actually, in preparation for this year, I had Scenario A, B, and C prepared. So, um, the bones are already built for realignment, and it, it is a live document. But this is the stepping stone budget.
And that's why we have confidence in you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miss, oh, sorry. Are you cracking your knuckles or are you raising your...
No, actually, listen, I understand that it's not... No, actually, I understand that it's not 2%, I also understand why, right? This is a huge step for us, and so, you know, thank you for being mindful, right? And all the more reason why we need the other budgets to come in where we're asking them to come in, right? So it's all for good reasons. I don't know if you can answer this question or if it's one for Mr. Javier, but next year, with realignment, right, and it kind of gets to what you're talking about, Brian, are we going to see a shift, like, a portion of the Campbell budget then coming into the Moss budget in order to, like, you know, we see, like, a decrease in the Campbell budget and then increase in the Moss to try to balance out the grade shift? Is that what we're going to see from you next year?
Yeah, actually, in preparing the different scenarios, we really kind of plan grade-based, so previously working with the elementary supervisors, a lot of the licenses are grade-based, a lot of the curriculum supplies that we purchase are grade-based, and in the lines, a lot of the supplies that are purchased are per grade as well. So that would be an easy migration, and also, having worked with Dr. Costanza, receiving all of the resources that he helped me in preparing this, I think it'll be a smooth transition.
Excellent. I imagine we would see kind of the same overall district budget, but we might see a shift in the school-based budget, so that's really my question was. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Suss?
Yeah, I know we can't congratulate you on the 2%, but I think what the people can't see is that you talked about 25 to 30 kids, and the budget only, I'm actually shocked by this, the budget's only increased by $11,000? That's it?
63.8%.
I mean, that's a, that's a great job. Is, is there something?
We're trying to build the stepping stones for next year, but I think that there were a lot of things that were already in place, and we did look for areas where we maybe did not need to make a purchase. A perfect example is, we have three fully intact kindergarten gen ed classrooms. Some of these purchases are first-time purchases, like the math manipulatives for the five other classrooms. We didn't have to buy them for all eight, so we really looked at it at a granular level just to ensure that we were being fiscally responsible.
Again, great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
But, Mr. Suss, the staffing is the big, the big numbers, the staffing.
Agreed, agreed, but even still, 25 to 30 kids, and we have to add for, you know, three, four more classrooms?
Right.
$11,000?
I hear you.
It's a great job.
Absolutely.
Don't let Mr. Glassberg take away from your accomplishment.
I'm just pointing out, those are relatively small numbers compared to the, you know, the teacher, teaching staff, school counselor, and so on are the big numbers in there.
So in summary, thank you for an excellent budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fair point. Madam President, that's our presentations for tonight. Thank you. We have now the prelim, yeah, so now we have, yeah, so we're done with our folks. We have, yeah, we have the preliminary budget now that is the next big step in the budget process, and the only other process, the only other step, is the April vote on the final budget. So this is a big step for the board tonight, and the rest of the handouts are the final line item budget preliminary. There's still going to be changes between now and the final budget, but this lays out all of the lines that Mr. Javier has prepared with all the budget managers and is a summary page at the back of your packet as well. So, Mr. Javier, did you want to present that?
Yes, sure. So the last two handouts are handout number six, which is the complete preliminary line item budget, and handout number seven, which I'm going to focus on, is the tax analysis. And it's the tax, is everybody there?
Almost.
It's the last sheet.
So comprehensive. Well, it's a pages.
Okay, so the, this tax analysis is for Fund 10 and Fund 40. Fund 10 is for all the operating costs of the district. Fund 40 is the debt service. The other funds that we have are Fund 20, but that's all funded by grants. There's no taxpayer money, no local taxpayer money in Fund 20. So I'll start, I'll start on Fund 10, 25, 26, and just briefly go over all these lines. I'll start with the revenues. Miscellaneous revenues, that's, the majority of that money is tuition out of district tuition students that we bring in. Interest income, and you notice that's increased since '03, '04 because of the increase in rates and rent. The next item is semi-special education Medicaid initiative. That's $4,990. That's estimated from, from the federal government through the state, and that number drops, we get that number from the state, so we have no leeway in what that number is. Next two numbers are budgeted fund balance. We're budgeting 2.6 million of budgeted fund balance towards this budget, and I'll get back to that when we go through the appropriations. Transportation revenue, that's $275,000. That's for the bus, the fee that we charge parents for the bus service. Next item is the tax, local tax levy. As you see, that's the bulk of our revenues, 45.5 million. Next item is 639,000. We're transferring, that's being transferred from our capital reserve, and then we're transferring out, if you go down below on the appropriations, we're transferring it out to Fund 40 to reduce the amount of taxes, taxes that we have to collect for the, for the debt service. Then I'll go to the appropriations. So the total revenues is 52.8 million. Appropriations, we have two charter school students, $40,000. General current expenses, 50 million. Deposit into capital reserve is a million three. That number mostly represents a grant, a one-time grant we received, and what we're doing is we're depositing that into the capital reserve to pay for capital projects that might come up in the future. We don't want to use it for general operating expenses because we don't intend on getting a grant again. It was a one-time grant. Next item, this is the transfer to Fund 40, the 639,000, and that's to reduce the amount of money, it's an inter-fund transfer, and it's to reduce the amount of money we have to collect in taxes. And the next item is the capital outlay. That represents, the state gave us a grant 20 years ago, and if anyone remembers, they, around 2010, they decided it wasn't a grant, they were going to make all districts and the state paid part of the debt service, and that's our share of the debt service, $100,000. So that takes, that's Fund 10. Then going to Fund 40, this is, this is the, this is the fund that accounts for the payment of the debt, the repayment of our debt. On the revenue side, we have state aid of $136,000. This is pretty close to what was estimated during the pre-referendum process, and that's all, that state aid is all allocated towards, all allocated towards the most recent referendum that we're in right now. Next item, the next revenue item is 475,000. This is money that's paid from the bond sinking fund. During the pre-referendum process, the board made a decision to open up a bond sinking fund, transfer funds from the capital reserve into the bond sinking fund to reduce the amount of taxes that had to be collected from, from the taxpayer, and that 475,000, as I said, is in a separate bond sinking fund, and each year over the next three years, we take money to offset the debt service. Next, next item is $450,000. That's paid by interest earned on the bond proceeds. We got the bond, we got the bond money upfront. Our bond counsel and investment consultant helped us invest the funds and, help us invent, invest in the bond proceeds, and this is money we're using from those proceeds to reduce the tax levy. Next item is 14 million, 14,370. That's a budgeted fund balance from the prior year, so that has to be budgeted this year. And then additional cap reserve, we're taking more money from capital reserve, $189,000 to keep the tax levy as low as we can. And the final number, the 4.1 million, that's the tax levy that we have to collect from the taxpayer. And then on the appropriation side of the budget, the interest is 3.2 million, the redemption of the principal is 2.9, so for a total of 6.1 million. And then just to get to the bottom line, the total tax levy we'll, we need to collect is 49, 49.7 million. Our rate of bills are about 1.1 billion. The average assessed house is 211,143. It's probably higher now, but just to be consistent, we're going to use the same number we used in prior years. If anyone wants, we can do it on different, different house, different amount of average assessed houses. Tax rate per hundred is 453. School taxes are 9,567 on the tax of the house assessed at 211,000. Tax increase, $259, and that represents a 2.79% increase over last year. And just to repeat what Dr. Caputo said, this is just the preliminary budget. The board has to vote on it. We're required, you're required to vote on a preliminary budget and a final budget. The final budget hearing will be the last week in April, and there can be change, in the past, there have been changes, and there can be changes between now and the final budget hearing. So, any, any questions?
Mr. Javier, thank you for your tireless efforts and for presenting tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues?
You go first.
Somebody go.
You want me to go first?
Mr. Lifton.
Mr. Javier, there's a line that you mentioned under appropriations regarding charter school student attendance. Two students, I believe you said, 48,975. Charter schools, what does that specifically refer to? Does that also refer to the VOTEX and the magnet schools? And where, how do we pay for that for our students?
So, so we're lucky in this county that we don't have to pay for the tuition that, for students that go to VOTEX, but we do have to pay for transportation, which can be considerable, but for charter schools in this town, we have to pay the tuition for the charter school students.
I see, so we don't, we don't actually pay per student that goes to the VOTEX or the magnet schools?
No, no.
But we do pay for transportation?
Yeah, some counties, the districts do pay, but not here.
And charter schools, just for my identification, because I don't know, do you know what schools those are that our students attend?
I can get that for the next meeting. I don't want to give the wrong name.
Of course. All right, well, thank you. I'd be interested to know, because I really, I don't know, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lifton. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Javier? Mr. Suss?
Thank you again, Mr. Javier. I'm not sure how many people realize how hard you worked on this, but you worked very hard on this. Question, just for the public's education, you mentioned that we receive in revenue for transportation $275,000. How much do we have budgeted for busing, so people understand how much we're losing on busing?
Between 700 and 800,000.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Meaning that the, that's the difference between what we expect to collect and what it's going to cost us, meaning the total cost would expect to be over a million? Or no?
No, no, that's the, so, so we budgeted, and I can get the exact number for you, it's between 700 and 800,000 for courtesy busing.
That's what we think it will cost us, and then we expect to collect perhaps approximately 275.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, doing the math, that's like a net loss of about $500,000. I was willing to give Dr. Costanza the dollar. I, this one, I, sorry.
Can't cover for us? Thank you, though.
I'm going to pass on that one.
I'm sure your heart is in the right place. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Javier? Fantastic. Thank you so much for all of the hard work that goes into preparing these budgets for us. At this time, we turn to reports, and I do not have one today. Dr. Caputo, do you have a superintendent's report?
No report for me tonight, thank you.
All right, wonderful. From a committee standpoint, I do not believe that any of the committees have met, but if I am mistaken, would you like to provide an update from your committee? And reminder as dates?
At each meeting, yeah, thank you. So, the construction committee did not meet. Our next meeting is on March 24th, but just a real quick update, we continue to have good progress at the high school and at Campbell School. Things continue to be moving, to be completed on time. At the high school, that does mean a later date of December 1st. And then at Edgar, work continues there, and at Moss, a lot of progress taking place at Moss. We are on track, as we heard before, for the full-day kindergarten, air conditioning at most all of the schools for the beginning part of the school year, so work is progressing everywhere, and we're meeting again on March 24th. There'll be an April open to the public meeting that I'll announce at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. And just for the good of the order, Mr. Bott, would you like to share when the next equity committee meeting will be?
Yeah, it'll be the 18th.
Thank you. And...
Curriculum meets also on the 18th.
Come on down, extricular. You're off.
Has not met. Have to look up the date. Okay, just kidding.
When are you meeting?
Put you on the spot. She said she has to look it up. Have to look up.
24th.
There you go. Meeting on the 24th. Policy?
We will be meeting next Tuesday, March 18th.
Finance, I'll be meeting the 24th.
Perfect, thank you, just for education of all. All right, and I actually do have a small update from, well, maybe not small, we'll see how fast I can read it, from the district leadership team. As you may know, Metatchen is part of the collaborative where they set best-in-class, best-in-state, best-in-the-country collaborative efforts among leadership teams within the schools across the district, and they meet every two months or so, bi-monthly, and the last meeting was held on February 27th. A lot of what I always have to say at the beginning of this is covered in construction and the updates by Mr. Glassberg, so I don't have much to add there except that the board offices are going to hopefully be moving to the high school cafeteria. Fingers crossed. So allow for the existing offices at Moss School to be converted to ensure that start of full-day kindergarten in the beginning of the 2025-26 year. It was great to hear about the ways in which folks are brainstorming and creatively coming up with the new spaces at their schools, the ways in which they'll utilize them, the invitation, especially for those teachers who will be moving across schools, to be able to be a part of the process and gathering input about how to best utilize the spaces. Of course, because the district is part of this collaborative inter-district grouping, they also talked about the fact that there's an upcoming conference on Friday, April 4th, where I am confident that we will be well represented by our leadership and some of our board colleagues, where they talk about, and people, it's really remarkable to, we know we're amazing here in Metatchen, but it's nice to kind of see the recognition from other school districts about the work that we are doing here. There was a great conversation about the way in which the planning for professional development is coming along nicely, similar to the process that was followed last year. Conversation around the New Jersey School Climate Improvement Survey that will be upcoming, ensuring that we have a chance to get a sense from everyone within our district how the school climate is proceeding. It, what was it that Dr. Costanza said? If you don't weigh in, you can't, if there's no buy-in, if you don't weigh in, I forget. I'm sorry, he's gone, so now, now he's going to be like dying, get my quote right. More conversation around the movement of staff as we plan for this reorganization, considerations in terms of staff as we undergo the realignment. Making sure that there's partnerships established, so that there's mentoring buddies, if you will, so that folks who do move buildings have folks to help them with that day-to-day transition, and thinking about ways in which students who will be making transitions indeed from Campbell back to Moss can assume the role of peer leaders or buddies to make sure that they can take their leadership skills or practice their leadership skills in that early stage. And that's it from the DLT from me, unless Dr. Caputo would today leave anything major out?
Yeah, we're always looking forward to those meetings and appreciate you, Mr. Glassberg, and, you know, all the folks on the DLT.
Thank you. All right, so back to our regularly scheduled program. Where there, oop, Miss Resta! See, that's why I write these things down. Back to the thing. Student board member report, please.
I just want to say, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. I'd like to start by mentioning how students across all schools are very excited about the weather right now, like, it's definitely lifting all of our spirits, very excited to get out of winter, you know, definitely feeling more like spring than winter. At the high school, I know a lot of the juniors and some seniors have recently taken the SAT, and I wish the best of luck to them, so I know a lot of people, my friends, were studying for that. Right now, juniors are in the middle of state testing, which is causing the schedules to be a little scrambled up, but it's kind of refreshing, you know, like, getting some of our later classes earlier, early classes later. It's nice to have a little switch-up, so we're all actually kind of happy about that. And the junior speeches and senior debates are coming up, and it's definitely something that, at least when I was a junior, and I know the juniors right now and seniors, we're working really hard for, so I'm really excited to see how those turn out. And at the middle school, I know last Thursday, they had their annual science fair. they had their annual science fair where the students had the chance to showcase their projects. And some high schoolers from the SNHS were able to volunteer there, too. And so, it's very exciting to see, like, the schools connect, you know, from across the grades. And at the elementary school, I've been hearing some excitement about a trip to the zoo coming up. You know, it's always fun to see the animals and things like that. I was talking to some of the kids in the elementary school, and they said the most exciting part was actually going on the bus, which is what surprised me. Yeah, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Resta. I think that we are all very excited at the warming that is happening in these recent days. It's been quite pleasant for me myself. I am a solar-powered human, so I was very happy today. All right. So, any questions or comments on, oh?
Just one to Ms. Resta. I'm glad you mentioned the Edgar Science Fair. We'll actually be honoring the winners from each grade, the four winners. Ms. Aliavich, I think that's the second April meeting? Yeah, that'll be going out from your invitation. So, thank you for mentioning that. Really excited to be able to bring them here in front of the board and celebrate the winners from the science fair.
And I think you picked up on our theme of collaboration because I loved what you said about the high school students, the honor students being able to come and participate in that. I think that must have been really exciting for the middle school students to have them there as well. So, thank you for that and highlighting that. And congrats to all who participated and indeed all of the winners. I look forward to seeing their presentations when they come to the board meeting in April. Thank you. Any questions or comments before we move past this section? All right. Any old business from the board? Any new business from the board? All righty. So, at this point, we'll move to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings of February 25th, 2025, special business meeting one, special business meeting two, and the board meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Dierflinger, are there any questions or comments about those minutes? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now, we move to the recommendation of the, sorry, just kidding. The meeting is now open to the public. I saw none, so I think I assumed that we had gone past that section. The meeting is open to the public. So, if you're waiting by the door and you just want to come in right now, this is your shot. All right. Seeing none, close that section of the meeting. Recommendation of the superintendent of schools. At this time, the board will take formal action. Oftentimes, it appears to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of schools. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is that it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. At this time, I'd like to move personnel items A. 1 through 13. Is there a second? Mr. Suss? Any questions or comments? Rule call, please, Ms. Aliavich.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we turn to finance. Mr. Suss?
I'd like to move items B. 1 through B. 7. Is this on the agenda?
Wonderful. Is there a second? Mr. Glassberg, any questions or comments? Mr. Suss?
Just one comment. Item three is the preliminary budget as discussed by Mr. Harvey A. earlier this evening.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we move to policy. Dr. Spigner?
Yes, I'd like to move items C. 1 through C. 2 for a vote.
Thank you. Any, is there a second? Mr. Bott, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, rule call, please, Ms. Aliavich.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Next, we turn to Mr. Dierflinger.
Thank you. I'd like to move items D. 1 through 3 and curriculum as listed on the agenda, please.
Is there a second? Dr. Spigner, questions or comments? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. At this time, the meeting is open to the public. Seeing none, we turn to Ms. Cheatham for the announcements.
Thank you. The latest update is really going to come out of Campbell Elementary PTO slash I'm the Moss PTO is that, starting in early April, there will be a bike train that will be supported by the community members such as teachers, NPD, and other volunteers. It's basically a really great initiative where the kids get together, they meet at a starting point, and they ride their bikes to school together in a nice controlled fashion, as controlled as it can be, I'm sure. But there is a designated route. So, more information will come out about that in the Friday 3 on March 28th. So, I encourage the community to take a look at that. I'm sure they could use more volunteers as they get closer to the April date. And then the other update is with the realignment of schools that it's come to the point where the Moss PTO and the Campbell Elementary School PTO will split formally, and there'll be a Moss PTO. So, I'm sure that'll open up a nice opportunity for other members to volunteer as well. So, again, more information will come out about that, I'm assuming in the coming weeks, for anyone that's interested in joining that board. And then finally, as just as a reminder for the community, our next Board of Ed meeting will happen on Tuesday, March 25th, in case there are any other updates. But thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. All right. At this time, I move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Dierflinger, all in favor? Aye. All right. Good night, everyone.